Hold order. City Commission meeting of Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Let the record show, we're missing one Commissioner. Mr. Steiner. Mr. Gah, the Order of Business, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker. There are no changes.
All right, there are no changes to the Order of Business. Are there any questions for Mr. Gah? Are you no questions? I'd look for a motion on the Order of Business.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the Order of Business.
I have a motion to approve the Order of Business.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on the Order of Business? Hearing none, all in favor of the Order of Business as presented? State aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Commissioners, are there, or is there anything on the consent agenda that you wish to discuss?
Mr. President, I would move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or comments on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the consent agenda. We have one timetable item this evening at 5:10, and that's the annual library report. We'll move into the non-time table items, and the first item up is administration. And we have a Code of Conduct resolution with Roosevelt-Custer Regional Council, and that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Custer-Roosevelt Regional Council required a current Code of Conduct Ethics Resolution from the City of Dickinson because the city is the pass-through agency for the CDBG grants. This is a requirement for issuing federal funds that any agency has a Code of Conduct or ethics on file. The Code of Ethics states that the City of Dickinson is committed to conducting its business in a fair, open, efficient, and accountable manner. Each city official and employee is assumed and expected to act in accordance with all laws that may apply to his or her position, as well as striving to avoid even an appearance of impropriety in the conduct of his or her office or business. City staff is recommending approval of the Code of Ethics of the resolution, and I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Resolution number, is this 15-2019? Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the Code of Conduct requested from Roosevelt-Custer I think that all Commissioners have read the Code of Conduct and have no objections to us passing this and signing off on it, unless we do. Okay.
Mr. President, I would move to approve Resolution Number 15-2019.
We have a motion to approve 15-2019.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up is an abatement for Warner Properties. And City Assessor Hirschfeld, you'll be handling this.
Thank you, Mr. President, Commissioners. Mr. Warner came before me with a couple of his properties he thought that were overvalued. One of them was 36 Eighth Avenue East, and the other was 921 Dell Street. 36 Eighth Avenue East is a large, older, two-story house that's been converted into four-apartment buildings, whereas 921 Dell Street is just a single-family residence. In regards to the conversion, I did go to the property, and of the four units, there was one that was being vacated the day that I was there, so I saw one unit. It's had a little bit of updating to the exterior and the interior, but like a lot of rentals, it received a little rough use over the last three or four years. It's also located on a parcel that's, would be considered grandfathered use now, couldn't be rebuilt without the zoning getting some special attention on that and permission from the city. So we gave some obsolescence for that, but the big thing was it was still considered residential where a four-unit complex should be considered commercial. So what that did was allowed it to be undervalued during the uptick of the boom. However, it didn't decrease in value the way other apartments did, so we corrected for that, moved it over to a commercial classification, and adjusted that property in, and showing a value now of $155,500 for that. In regard to the property, 921 Dell, it had gone through the revaluation a couple of years ago prior to Mr. Warner purchasing it. Felt at that time that it was valued accurately, but when I went through the property, it was the condition was a little less than what it had been before. Really no idea to tell what the condition was at the time of the abatement year. However, went ahead and elected to decrease the condition in a manner that suits what it is currently, and was looking to decrease that property as well slightly. Neither property or is the assessing department looking to decrease to the level that Mr. Warner's looking for. And so when I last spoke to him, he had some concern about that, but, you know, he was still, you know, happy that we'd made some adjustment. Didn't see him in the audience here prior, so I don't know if he's here now or not. Okay. Well, Mr. Warner is here now, so, I mean, that's, you know, the essence of what I have, we went out, made a few adjustments, reduced the value for not only this 2019 current year, but would recommend a slight decrease for both properties for the 2018 year as well. With that, open up to any questions that you have, and then we'll let Mr. Warner say his piece if he has any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hirschfeld? Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner, if you want to, if you have any comments?
Yeah, my bigger concern is that a place, 36th Eighth Avenue East, it's a fourplex, older, older, older fourplex. And back in 2015, I rented out an apartment one for $1,200 a month. Now I'm getting $450 sometimes. Apartment two, 2014, I was getting $1,150 a month. Now I'm getting $450 a month. Apartment three, 2013, I was getting $675. Now I'm getting $250. Apartment four, apartment four, in 2012, I was getting $1,150. Now I'm getting $250. So the income isn't close to what it was, not even half. And it means it's an older place, I'm getting poorer and poorer renters. In the last three months, three of the renters have been in prison or jail. I just evicted a person who was five months behind on rent. So it just, it just, what the taxable valuation on that is, it's not close to reality. If somebody would offer me $100,000, I would take it.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Any questions for Mr. Warner? Thank you. Commissioners, we have three options here. We have a request for abatement of $120,000. We have a corrected value presented by the assessing department for $155,500. And we also have a third option, which is as a commission to correct the value of property to what we deem is appropriate for that property. If there's any discussion or questions for staff or Mr. Warner? I'm not familiar with the actual property. I'm familiar with the location, but is there any, any questions, Commissioners?
I mean, I'm just looking at the history here a little bit. So in 2015, we had that property valued at 222, and now we're, this year we're down at 178, and we're looking to go to 155, is that correct? Maybe Mr. Hirschfeld can answer that.
Mr. President, Commissioner Frederick?
And I'm talking about the 36th Eighth Avenue, obviously.
At the peak, the highest value we had on this property was 222,000 for 2015. And current 2018 value was 186,600, and the 2019 value prior to correction was 178,100.
And when did we reclassify, commercial?
It should have been commercial all along because it was four-unit, but just this year did we classify it as commercial.
So, and then you're recommending a value of 155, even with the reclassification?
Correct.
And Mr. Hirschfeld, you said you did get to look inside the property, at least one of the units?
Inside of one unit, yes.
Would you say that, that one unit accurately, you know, portrays the whole interiors of all of them?
If I remember the conversation correctly, I asked that question of Mr. Warner, and he said it was pretty similar.
Okay.
It had some updating, but, you know, kind of a low-normal, below-normal condition with some lower-quality materials.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hirschfeld or Mr. Warner? Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you.
There are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on one of our, of the three options that we do have. Again, to restate, we have the request of the applicant of $120,000. We have a presented value that is supported by the assessing department of $155,500, and we have the third option to correct the value of the property to some other amount.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frederick?
I'd make a motion to, on property ID number 0050-1200-1600, at 36th Eighth Avenue West, for a value of the $155,500, as Mr. Hirschfeld recommends.
We have a motion to use the recommended assessed value of $155,500. And a second. Any further discussion or questions on this abatement? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. A second property, the request is by applicant of an abatement of $123,500. The corrected value, supported by our assessing department, is $167,000.
I have one question on that. Is the basement finished in that property, Mr. Hirschfeld? Did you get to inspect it?
I did get to inspect the property. The basement is finished, but a very low-quality finish. Older carpets, panel walls, you know, than the old, early eighties panel, malls seventies panel, so not a high-quality finish at all.
And you're recommending?
He's recommending 167. The applicant has asked for a value of $123,500. And prior value, it was 176,300, Mr. Hirschfeld, 2018, or 2019? The 2018 value is 176,300, right?
Correct.
Okay. So you're recommending roughly $8,700 reduction?
If I'm looking at this right, the high on that property was 197,100 in 2016?
Any other questions for Mr. Hirschfeld or Mr. Warner on this property? Hearing no other questions, I'd look for a motion on this abatement.
Mr. President, I make a motion on property ID number 0200-0400-1200, 921 Dell Avenue, I believe, or that street?
Yes.
Dell Avenue? To go with the assessor's recommendation of, where is that number here?
We have a motion to value the abated property at 167,000. With a second. Any further discussion or questions for, for staff or Mr. Warner? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Hirschfeld.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our quarterly financial report, and that will be presented by Mr.
Thank you, President Decker and members of the Commission. So this PowerPoint, as always, this one's going to be a summary of our first quarter 2019 financials that you saw in your packet. So the first slide is for our networking cash accounts. You can see we're right about, just under 60 million. We finished 2018 at 55 million, and we're pretty consistently in that 55 to 60 million dollar range. It basically fluctuates with any, you know, bond payments we make, depending on what, on the timing of those payments, and other cash that we have coming in. And the remaining, roughly 36 million here, is from our investment accounts. We did make all of our budgeted contributions to our pension accounts at the beginning of 2019, so we will see those numbers decrease a little as, as distributions are made throughout Jumping into our state treasury revenue, this first slide is for our 1% sales tax. And just as we always do, a reminder to the public that these are collected on a two-month lag. So for example, the amount you see in February, the reason that's higher, that's money that we would have collected in December over the holiday season. That's why it's one of our higher months over the course of the year. We were about $95,000 higher in the first quarter of 2019 compared to where we were in the first quarter of 2018, which is about a 6% increase over that period of time. And then the half percent sales tax as well, like we've mentioned before, we show this slide to show the public that we do, even though it's one sales tax collection, we actually have a 1% sales tax fund and a half percent sales tax fund that the money is distributed to. So this trend will be exactly the same as the slide before, exactly half of the previous Our hospitality tax collections, we are about $12,000 higher in the first quarter of 2019 as compared to 2018, which is about a 5.5% increase. We're at $232,000 in the first quarter of 2019. For occupancy tax, so with our occupancy tax collections, we take out a half of 1% as an administration fee, and the remainder of the dollars actually goes to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This number shows our entire collection without that administration fee taken out. So with that, we are about $12,000 higher in the first quarter of 2019, which is about a 12, or excuse me, 23% increase over the prior year. As you can see in our oil impact revenue, the blue line in 2018 is a little lower in the beginning of 2018. That was the tail end of the dollars that were coming out for the 2.5 million that went to Dickinson State University. So at the end of 2018, that was completely paid off, and now all of the collections are coming directly to us. We're still, we're a little bit higher than we were with those payments coming out, but a little bit below where we were at the end of 2018. Just comparing first quarter, we were about 14.6% higher for the first quarter of 2019 as compared to 2018. And you can see too, we're averaging, we're just a little bit over a million dollars, so we're on pace to get about $12 million if we stay at this level in 2019. And then the final slide here is the summary of the age trial balance that you see in your packet as well. As you can see, we're 96% current on payables, and we did include a over-90-day report in your packet for receivables if you have any questions on any of those dollar amounts as well. If you do, please let the finance staff know, and we can get that information to you. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury? Mr. Maury, we don't get a breakdown from the state, right, by sector?
No, I don't, I don't believe so. Not that I have seen.
So we can't attribute January's increase, which is trailing two months behind, so that would be November sales of 2018?
Correct.
To Dunham's opening.
Correct. I don't, I'm not able to see any type of report like that.
Oh, okay. Any questions for Mr. Maury? Not, I'd look for a motion on the financial report.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions for Mr. Maury? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up, Mrs. Nomenek will be presenting the Public Works Operation Manager job description. Mrs. Nomenek?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. The Operations Manager is just a rewrite of our Street and Fleet Operations Manager job description. That position formerly was overseeing the Fleet Department and the Street Maintenance Department. Public Works Director Zurov has done a rewrite of the job description, and we're changing it up a little bit in adding the Facility Maintenance, or the Buildings and Sites, as we currently call them. That department reported to the, to Mr. Zurov, and we'll have that department now reporting to the Operations Manager if this is approved. So with the title change of Operations Manager, obviously, this position would be responsible for coordinating, directing, facilitating, and managing the operations of the maintenance activities of the city's street, facility maintenance, and fleet services divisions within the Public Works Department. Work is performed under the general direction of the Public Works Director. Considerable latitude is allowed for independent judgment and initiative, and may act on behalf of the Public Director, Public Works Director in his absence. The responsibilities would include the oversight of the city's street construction, repair, maintenance projects, snow removal, operations, fleet program, facility maintenance, and the cemeteries. So with re-scoring this position, it really stayed at the same level that it was at before, is not going to change the grade level. We're just adding the Facility Maintenance to be a part of this position's responsibilities, and changing the title to Operations Manager. City staff would recommend approval of this. If you have any questions, Mr. Zurov and I would be happy to help you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek or Mr. Zurov? If there are no questions, I'd look for a motion on this job description.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the job description.
We have a motion to approve the job description. With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mrs. Nomenek or staff? Or Mr. Zurov? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. And we have a report. Mrs. Nomenek?
Yes, I have the hiring journal for you. Police officer is always the top of our list. We are getting close to having our police officer positions filled. We actually had a couple police officers that have left to try other areas and are coming back to us, we're very excited about. So we have several, several people that we are in the offer phase, doing the background right now. So another position that we had open was the Animal Control Supervisor, and offer has been made, we're still kind of on hold with that. We recently filled a Communications Specialist. That position has been filled, and she is currently doing her training. Public Safety Support Supervisor was a recent hire. Liz Oakerson from Stark County Emergency Management has filled that position, and her first day was Monday. We have had a Design Engineer open for a while, and not having much luck getting any applicants for that. Kind of hoping we would find someone that is right out of college, maybe, or someone experienced would be great too, but even someone who's not would be great, but we've not been seeing any applications come through on that. We had an Engineering Technician position open up recently. We had one applicant for that and made an offer, and we are in the background phase, so we're hoping that will follow through for us. The Street and Fleet Manager position will reopen as Operations Manager starting tomorrow. We had a, we actually had two Street Maintenance Operator positions open. We are doing the interviews, in the interview process right now for that. We had a Mechanic position open up. It was an additional position, and we hired internally Jesse Kuntz from, he was a Fleet Shop Technician, so then that opened up the Fleet Shop Tech position, and we did do interviews on that, and we are in the background phase for that position. Solid Waste Landfill, we were able to fill all of our positions with that. We hired Lane Anderson. He worked for us previously and decided to come back, so we are happy to see that. Collections Route Operator, we've had some trouble trying to fill that. We had several openings, I think four to begin with, had filled them all, and a couple of those positions did not work out. Still kind of trying to fill a couple of them. We have interviews scheduled for this week. We have interviews scheduled for this week. We did open a Part-Time Route Operator position to kind of help out with that, so we have someone that works the weekend. Gary Keller, who used to work for us full-time, came back to work part-time with us, and that's been working out great. And along with that, we opened up some Part-Time Scale Operator positions to help with the weekends there, so we were able to fill four of those positions on a part-time basis. Property Appraiser has also been another one that's been difficult to fill. We did, at one point, make an offer that was declined, and then we've had a tough time getting applicants. However, we did just do interviews last week. We had two applicants, and we're still in the deciding phase right now on what we're going to do with that. We had an Accountant position that we've recently filled, Samantha Schwint. She's been here for two weeks now, so we're happy to have her onboard. Limited Hour Librarian, we had several positions that we filled for limited hour, actually four of them. And then we get into kind of our summer positions. We had an opening at the library in Midora, and so we're, it declined offer, so we're reopening that position and going to try to fill that with a, someone just for the summer. We were looking for kind of a GIS Engineering Intern-type position, have not had any luck getting any applicants for that position. However, the applicant that we made the offer to for Engineering Tech has some GIS background, so we're hoping to kind of utilize him in both roles. So we're going to open a Seasonal Position for Engineering Tech, and that's been opened up this week. We had a Paleontology Intern Position that we were able to fill. He has started for us. Seasonal Museum Scanner, I believe we filled that position. Forestry, we have filled all of our forestry positions for seasonal. Water Utilities for seasonal, I believe we have one left to fill there. Museum Workers, those are both filled. We have a Museum Weekend Attendant we're still trying to fill. Facility Operator, we have a full-time opening there, and that closes tomorrow, so we'll begin the interviews on that. And Facility Maintenance Supervisor, we had one turn, opened it up internally, and we are in the interview process for that position. And then Buildings and Sites is the last one. We still have one position we need to fill for seasonal for Buildings and Sites, so we're getting close to having all those summer positions filled, and it looks like spring will be here soon.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the HR report, the Hiring Journal? Mrs. Nomenek, are you seeing overall just the applications increasing, or just selective positions, or?
We really aren't. The scale, we have a full-time Scale Services Attendant position that we just opened up, and we are getting a fair number, you know, we don't usually see more than 15, 20 would be a lot for us. So we're getting a fair number on the Scale Services Attendant, but other than that, we're just not seeing many applicants for any of the positions.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Nomenek? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into Public Works. Mr. Zurov, we have an Apex Task Order for Fairway.
Yes, thank you, President, Deputy Commissioner. This task order is for the bidding and construction services for the Dickinson Hills subdivision off-site infrastructure improvements, which is basically construction of Fairway and the utilities within the city right-of-way. The improvements were designed by the owner, and the City of Dickinson is bidding the project and awarding a contract to this successful low bidder for the infrastructure. The improvements include the city's infrastructure and street section within the Fairway Street from State Avenue West to the western boundary of Phase One development, and the utilities in the common roads and easements. This task has been reviewed by staff, and we recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this task order? Mr. Zurov, this, and anyone else that has been connected with this, this is strictly for Fairway. This is nothing on the west energy loop, or?
It's Fairway Street, but also the utilities that are owned by the city, the water lines and the 50-foot easements in the common road section. Because those will be the city's water mains, there'll also be some construction oversight on it.
Okay. So if anything happens on the west business loop, that'll be a separate item?
Yes, I believe so. I believe that was the intent of this task.
Okay, good. All right, any other questions for Mr. Zurov on this task order? And I think, let me find the task order on here.
Task order number six.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. This is task order number six. If there are no other questions or comments on this task order, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the Apex Task Order number six.
We have a motion to approve Task Order number six.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Ms. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item is Public Works Street Report, but we will, Mr. Weiner, we will wait because we're right on the cusp of the timeline unless you can finish it in four minutes. Don't think so.
You can have any time.
Well, I've done this to you before, where I brought you up and sat you down multiple times, so, but why don't you, why don't you come up and we'll start. We do have some time, and this is, you know, the library report is a timetable agenda, so.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As I say, it is the report for last year. Just a run-through of the employees we have. One manager position, which is still vacant, as you heard previously, Chief Operator, which is myself. We have three senior operators, which are basically foreman positions, four operators, and two vacant operator positions, and then we also have the one Signing and Striping Specialist. As far as our maintenance operations compared to the previous year, starting on the upper left, equipment and facility maintenance, that includes anything we do on city properties, maintaining our vehicles and equipment, things like that, had a slight increase over 2017. Agency Assist is helping other departments, things like that, very slight increase over 2017, basically the same. Signing, streetlights, traffic lights was the same percentage as 2017. Winter activities dropped 10% from the year before. That's due to the fact that the second half of the first, of the winter before and the first half of last winter were milder, so didn't have to put as much out into that. And street maintenance activities for the summer increased just slightly over 2017. So basically, the breakdown of our different tasks is about the same as it was the year Some of the things we did, paving and patching, we put down 44% less hot mix last year. Reason for that is Northern Improvements Plant was not in town most of the year. We were unable to do a lot of the patching we would normally plan on doing, which means this year we're that much further behind. Other than patching the water breaks from the previous winter, we only did a minimal amount of other paving with actual hot mix. The patching rock and the road oil, that's what we use for our dura-patchers to do the patching and potholes, things like that. It's roughly the same as the year before. Crack sealant, we put down about 44,000 pounds of crack sealing. That involves routing the cracks to get a good reservoir for the oil and put the hot rubberized asphalt in there, and that's hopefully to prevent our streets from deteriorating further by keeping water out. We didn't do any crack sealing in 2017. In 2017, we used hot-applied mastic, which is similar to crack sealing, but it also levels out the depressed cracks. And we didn't do any of that last year. That was kind of an experiment in 2017, and after having about a year and a half under our belts on it, we plan on doing some more this year with it. It seems to be a successful way to take care of quite a few problems in the road. Street sweeping, the different types of material we picked up is pretty well the same from year to year. Regular dirt, 18% increase. That's just from dirt and dust blowing into town, blowing off of construction sites, and just general stuff. Ice control sand, as you can see, decreased about 29%, and as you'll see later, we used, we put a lot less down, so obviously we pick up a lot less. And this is the one, the big difference. Ice control sand, we used about 51 tons during the entire year of 2018. In 2017, we used 276. Doesn't necessarily mean we keep, or we're doing a better job with the salt and the brine, it just means that it wasn't as cold. As the sand, we try to use only when it's below zero, when the salt and brine don't work as well. Road salt, basically the same. We used a little bit more than we did in 2017. The brine, we used quite a bit more, and we've had quite a bit of success with the brine. We're getting a little more experience under our belts. We know a little bit more what we can do before the storm comes in for pre-treating, and as we found out, we've had several storms that were pretty successful on keeping the snow from sticking to the pavement and turning into ice by getting the brine down ahead of time. And then we also use brine directly to melt snow and ice, and also to pre-wet the salt to make it work faster. Some of the training we did, we had two people go to the North American Snow Conference, and that's a educational event, a three-day event, that attended several classes on different ways of removing snow, controlling ice. There are a lot of vendors there showing off their equipment, so it's very valuable. That was the fourth year we've gone to it, and we learn something new every year on it. The Regional Roads Conference is held in Rapid City every fall. Three of us went down there, and as you can see, we won the award for the You Show Us contest. It's, the contest is for employees who design and build something to make the work easier. On the left picture there, you can see a frame we built. We mounted it onto a four-wheeler that used to be used by weed control, and now it's just kind of sitting around not being used, so this is one of the things we found for it. Rather than pushing that steel frame by hand to spread the mastic, we mounted it on there, we're able to do wider cracks with it. We've got a frame that's 36 inches wide, and there's no way we could push a frame by hand with that. So we submitted that, and they chose us as the top invention in North Dakota. So we felt pretty good about that one.
Got our patent.
Other training, we have, our sign person goes to the Northland Signing Conference in Fargo every year and finds out about the latest signing trends, I guess you could say, and different things. Couple years ago, she took our sign truck down there and showed it off, and we've got, had quite a few inquiries on the construction of it and where they can find one like it. A Road Scholar certification, that is achieved through the North Dakota LTAP. It's Local Transportation Assistance Program. It's run by NDSU. It's a nationwide program to get training out to the people in the field, and we attend several training sessions every year, and by acquiring a certain number of hours of certification, you can get to the levels. As you can see, we have four people at Level Two, which is roughly 120 hours of training, I believe. Level One is 30 hours of the required courses. So the two people that have Level One also have quite a few hours that'll count toward the Level Two. And then we had three new employees who haven't been here long enough to get the certification yet, but every time we have a chance, we send people to that. Some of the things we did over the year, we updated our winter operations plans and our snowplow routes. We had created them the year before, and after a year of using them, we decided that we can make them better, so we did that this year. We also had automatic vehicle location units in three of our trucks, and with that, we were able to see where the trucks were, how much material they were putting down, what kind of material they were putting down, and that way we can track, you know, what we're doing on the roads and how it's working. And we will be installing AVLs in the rest of our winter equipment this summer, so next winter that should all be available, and we can track where everything's going. Some of the big things the Signing and Striping Division did was they're continuing to update all the street location markers. In the olden days, they were stamped steel, black letters on white. Now, the requirement is white letters on green, and they have to be reflective and a certain size. It's probably going to take a couple more years to get all of them in town changed out to that. On the bottom there, you can see signs that had to be replaced because they were hit by vehicles or faded. Roughly 300 signs were replaced. Something new for us last year, we had a vehicle hit one of the traffic lights on Highway 22 by the hub. The crash barrier that was in front of it was totally destroyed, and it actually damaged the light pole. To provide safety, we had to get some crash attenuator barrels from the highway department and put them in place, and that was something new. None of us have ever done that before, and so we thought it was kind of a neat thing to do. We've also been working on updating striping at the intersections. That's something that was, years ago, they started and they decided they were going to use the rubberized tape to do it, and they figured we don't ever have to maintain it again. Well, the rubberized tape wears off, so you've probably noticed there are a lot of crosswalks around town that you can't see the linings. We're updating it with thermoplastic, which lasts a lot longer. It's more expensive, and it takes a while to put down because you basically have to melt it into the pavement, but it hangs around a long time. We, very seldom do we have to go back and replace any. And as part of updating our winter maintenance plan, we updated the snow emergency routes. First of all, we came up with an actual definition of the snow emergency route, and then we figured out which streets in town we needed to do it. So we removed signs from routes that, or streets that didn't qualify anymore, and moved them over to the routes that are there, and had to install quite a few extras. With this, if the city declares a snow emergency, having the signs in place will allow the police department to help enforce that and help us with getting the streets open quicker. Some of the other things Signing and Striping does is temporary traffic control for city projects. You know, the roadwork ahead, the cones, all that other good stuff. She helps the street department workers get that all set up, so it follows the federal guidelines. And then we also paint the curbs yellow and take care of the crosswalks, as I mentioned Traffic signal maintenance coordination. When the traffic lights aren't working, they call the street department to get them fixed. And we have contractors who are trained in those signals. They get out there. There's times we have to provide traffic control while they're working on them. That's, two of the signals, one of them I mentioned before at the hub, hasn't been replaced yet, but there are two others in town that have been replaced because of being hit. Streetlight repair. As the streetlights burn out, they have to be repaired. As people hit them and knock them over, they have to be replaced. Two of them were reportable accident, or reported accidents, so we knew who did it, so we'll get the money back from that. There were several others that were hit, and there were no accident reports, so the city foots the bill on those. And there was one control pedestal on River Drive, a brand-new lighting system, brand-new pedestal, and it was mowed over one night, and so that one has been replaced, and they didn't know who hit that, so that's our dime also. didn't know who hit that, so that's our dime also. This is summary. The street department strives to maintain safe, clean streets for the driving public. And judging by the phone calls we get, we don't always do the best job in the public's eye. And that's all I have. If you have any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Any questions for Mr. Weiner? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We have a, an item up in, next, and that is the annual library report and library expansion update, which we're all looking forward to. So Director Ennin.
Mr. President, Commissioners, thank you for your time today. I'm excited to share with you some of the highlights from our 2018 annual report, as is filed to the State Library and the Institute for Museum and Library Services. And then we'll follow up with some updates and a look at the plans for our building expansion. So I hope you can, you can see this, but this is our budget and staff numbers from 2017 and 2018. From 2017 to 2018, our revenue was actually down slightly in local revenue dollars. That has to do in part with property values coming down, so the value of a mill has decreased. But we have actually had increases in what we got from the state and also our other resources, which is donations and other things like that. So it's just very slightly less 2018 to 2017 revenue. The bubbles there, what that shows you is that the largest portion of our expenditures is, of course, staff. That's close to sixty-five percent of our budget that is spent for staff, followed by materials, and then other operating supplies. So that's what you see there. Our staff for 2018, we had eight full-time librarian equivalents compared to seven and a half in 2017, so we're certainly grateful for that. And we, in total hours, had four-point-one-nine FTE of part-time library aides worked for us during 2017, and one custodian. Library hours and patrons. Our total hours of operation were five-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy-five. That is actually between three different sites. So as you will see, the largest portion of those hours are the main library. We were open three-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-two hours at the main library during 2018. We also had one-thousand-seventy-five hours in which the bookmobile was in operation. We made three-hundred-and-thirty-three stops and covered more than fourteen-thousand miles. So our bookmobile really travels. We also had more than a thousand hours of service where the Madora branch was open, both after school, during the school year, and then they are open forty hours a week during the summer. In total, we had eleven-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-one people last year that were in possession of a library card. So that's not everybody that comes to the library, but that is everybody that could check something out with a library card. We estimate that's just about thirty-six percent of the residents of our service area. And visitors to the main library, so to the main branch here in Dickinson, were eighty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-five this last year. Collections and materials. So our collections overall have increased a little bit over four percent. We have all kinds of different sorts of things. And so our physical print materials, that means books, et cetera, is actually down just a little bit. We weeded or de-accessioned more items than we took in in that particular category last year. That's partly making up for a lag from previous years and needing to make some room in the stacks for new things coming in. We did increase, however, our video collections, which is one of our most heavily circulating collections, by almost thirteen percent, at four percent in audiobooks. And then our ebooks and e-audio, both of which we collect as part of a consortium of libraries within North Dakota, so we all contribute to that, those collections, and then all of our patrons can use them. It allows us to provide much more in that way than we otherwise could. And those collections increased significantly over this last year, seven percent for ebooks and thirty percent for e-audio. That was done specifically at the request of patrons who were asking for more downloadable audio as opposed to the audio CDs they'd been used to listening to. All total, our collections comprise one-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight items, and they grew by just about nine percent. That's in total counting the electronic materials. Up on the corner there, I like every time I go to just point out that we have some things that people don't always think about that we sure wish you would come in and make use of if you would like. We do have, courtesy of the state parks, some North Dakota State Park passes. So this summer, come and check one out. You can have it for a week, and it will give you free admission to any state park in North Dakota. We have book club kits, and so that's a kit where you can come and get ten books and some discussion questions for your book club. Leapfrog and Me readers, those are the electronic readers that are for preschool kits, and we circulate some of those. And something brand-new this year, learning bundles. Patrons are very excited about those. What that is is a little kit that's been put together by our children's librarian based on a topic. So we've got on all different topics, but for instance, there's one on shapes. It's for preschool kits. So it's got three books in it that talk about shapes that you can read with your child, and then it has a little sorting game and some other hands-on learning-type activities, and an activity guide that our children's librarian puts together herself to may help with those. So if you have kids, I hope you'll come and check those out. How our patrons use library materials and really library facilities. People ask all the time for some comparisons, and we have them here for you. We did have one-hundred-and-six-thousand-seventy-nine total checkouts last year, which was actually a one percent increase from the year before. So if you wonder if people still check things out at the library, yes, they do. We also have just about a thirty-two percent actual increase in our circulations of electronic books and electronic audio, as we were talking about earlier. We saw a thirty-four percent increase in the use of databases that are provided by the library. That one was a little surprising to me, but that comes in part because we are providing access to Mangled Languages, which is a language learning database, and people seem to really like that. So that's where some of that increase comes from. We did have eighteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-five people use our public computers last year. That was a small increase from the year before. And one category in which we are actually down just a little bit actually is the Wi-Fi connections. And even being down slightly, we still had one-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-three connections to our Wi-Fi server during 2018. The other thing I would point out on the sides there, what you're seeing in brown is 2018, and in blue is 2017. So they're pretty close for most things, but one of the things that we find very interesting, and we saw it not just in library materials, but also in our programs, is that we had a noticeable increase or uptick in adult things being checked out, and a few less with children, which is not maybe what we necessarily expect to see, but it was interesting. So our services and events, I'll point out the pictures over there. The top picture is some girls that were at our teen lock-in. We had two different opportunities during the year where the kids could earn an invitation to a lock-in at the library. And we were surprised, but for the winter reading program, we had sixty kids actually finish the reading challenge to earn a chance to come to the lock-in. So these girls are working together on some clues and a little team exercise that they were doing that evening. The one on the bottom there is a young lady who's came to receive some Jedi training. So that's what that picture is. You will see that once again this year, we did have an increase in the number of attendees at library programs. Thirty-one-thousand-six-hundred-and-seventy-eight people attended one of our programs last year. Quite a few more reference questions answered from the year before. Once again, I don't know why, but I guess people had things they needed help with, and we're glad to help them. The AWE literacy station, that's the bilingual station downstairs with learning games for kids. It's been very popular. It continues to be very popular at about the same rate. So one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine sessions, and those kids spend on average twenty-eight-plus minutes. I always say, anytime you get to preschool or engaged in something learning for twenty-eight minutes, you've done a pretty awesome job, actually. Fair and summer reading attendees, so that's our summer reading program, and the fairs are the baby fair, the health and safety fair, and other places that our staff go out to, to work with people. And once again, we had AARP come and offer tax help. They helped three-hundred-and-seventy-eight people file their taxes in 2018. Few more highlights from library programs. Once again, more than sixteen-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seven kids, so that's kids ages ten and under four-thousand, almost five-thousand teens, and nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty adults. The most remarkable thing about all of that is that most of our increase this year actually was in greater numbers of adults attending programs. Also give tours. We have people attend fairs, as we talked to a minute ago. Our summer reading kickoff program had three-hundred-and-fifty people come out that Sunday last year. And then we do lots of special programs. I'd just like to point out a few of them. Paint in Pajamas is one where we have a storytime program for kids, at the same time that we offer a paint a night for adults, so it gives moms and dads some opportunity to do something fun for themselves and know that their kids are busy doing something that they enjoy and is good for them, too. We had the Japanese taiko drummers come last year. That's what these pictures over here on the right were. That room was jam-packed, and it was just a lot of fun. Grinchness, we do every year. This year, we had more than a hundred kids there. I'm sorry to say, we had some that didn't make it in the door because we were just absolutely overpacked, but my staff are busy planning already to figure out how we're going to make adjustment for that so that all the kids that want to get there can. That was about two and a half times as many kids as showed up the year before, so it was kind of a surprise, but my staff, I think, did a great job of rolling with and handling that the best they could. Teen lock-ins, we had two of them. We did some escape room activities and other things. I told you about that earlier. Jedi training, fairy tale tea parties, lots of other fun stuff. And of course, our core programs, three storytimes a week, a teen activity every Tuesday. So these are our numbers from last year's summer reading program. The Libraries Rock was the theme. It is a theme that's used by libraries around the country. I won't read the whole slide to you, but what I would point out is those numbers that are in bold are all places where we had an increase in participation over the year before. So once again, we did have more people participate in our program in total, and we saw greater participation, in particularly in the early literacy program, the zero-to-four age. Hundred-and-fifty-four kids turned in activity logs, averaging eighty apiece, which means families were doing a whole log several times a week with their, with their young ones, which is exciting. Our children's program is holding pretty steady, and those kids averaged eight-hundred-and-sixty-eight minutes worth of reading during the summer. And we're very pleased to say teens, once again, last year, a hundred and four turned in coupons. That's more than ever before. And they read an average of thirty-nine-point-two-eight hours, which for a teenager during the summer, I think is pretty awesome. Then we also had a hundred-and-twenty-two adults that were slightly less than have turned in coupons and years passed, but they read a little bit more on the average. So I'd like to take just a minute to show you a couple of upcoming things. Our summer reading theme this year will be a universal stories. So a couple of big events that are happening, and we'll have lots of stuff going on all summer long, so I hope you'll check out our calendar. But the first Sunday in June, which I believe is June the second, we will have our summer reading program kickoff again from one to four. It will be a carnival-type thing, as we've done before. One thing that's new this year that I'm really excited about, we've got some folks coming over from the National Park, and they're bringing sun-spotting scopes and some other kind of astronomy-related type activities to share with us. They are actually going to be with us two or three different times during the summer, bringing some fun things that have to do with space. One of the big things that we're doing that they will be coming to is a moon-landing party. We're going to be doing that on July the twentieth. It's a Saturday. There will be activities for all ages. We're doing that in honor of the fiftieth anniversary of Apollo Eleven. One of the very exciting things that's going to happen that day, we are going to be having storytime with astronauts. Actually, NASA did a pilot program with the Denver Public Library last year to trial this, and now they've rolled it out to the rest of the library. So at several times throughout that day, it will actually be a live feed from the space station. And we're, as I said, just really excited about that. There'll be lots of other fun activities for all ages that day, so I hope you'll come and see us. And this, just to pique your curiosity a little bit, we've been working hard on a new website. It will go live next week. So come next week, check out our website, and you're going to see something different than you've seen recently, among other things. Right on the front, our events for the day and those sorts of things will be there. This website will have the capacity to request reservations for our community room, potentially to, it might not be right away the first week, but to go ahead and sign up for our events, and even have yourself sent an email reminder or a text so that you remember what you signed up for. So we're really excited about that, too. And last, always, I like to show and remind our library hours. Monday through Thursday from nine AM to eight PM. Fridays, nine to six, and Saturday, nine to five. That is year-round. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions for Mrs. Ennin?
Mr. President, I don't have any questions specifically. Every time I listen to your reports, I'm always so surprised and excited to see how much you guys have going on. And I know we've gone through a few things in my family, but I wish we could get to more because you guys are doing some incredible things for all ages throughout the community. So thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thanks.
I would echo that. I think you guys do an amazing job.
Thank you. So next part of what we have here is what you all really actually wanted to hear about, right, is our expansion project. And Mr. Joe Larrabee from Bartletton West is here. He has been the principal architect on our concept of design, and will be talking you through this part of the presentation.
Thank you, Rita. Good evening, President, Vice President, and Commissioners. As Rita said, we've, we've been very busy, both programming, designing, and then meeting with the public to unveil the preliminary designs for expansion and remodeling of, of your library. And we started out with explaining to the, the public how we arrived at goals and objectives with library staff and Director Ennin. From that point, we defined a project scope in order to determine both the condition and assessment of the existing facility and its site, as well as programming and analysis of what required spaces needed to be accommodated in a new project. The facility assessment report was the, the vehicle by which we evaluated the site, the building, its accessibility issues, mechanical, electrical, structural design. Overall, we felt the building was very well-maintained and in very, very good condition. We didn't feel there was anything that was in, in real need of, of upgrading, other than the fact that the, the building just didn't address all the programmatic needs of, of the modern And so we began dialogue with, with staff and determined the programmatic needs, and that, this is a tough slide to read. this is a tough slide to read, but that's essentially how we arrived at the spatial program, in terms of what additional space needed to be accommodated, where it needed to be accommodated in, remodeled space versus new, actual new addition space. And then, we totaled that up, and essentially, what we came to grips with was the library needed to be increased by about double, to accommodate all the programs, all of the collection areas, the various department spaces, and especially and critically, public space for meetings. You have a very nice meeting room. Unfortunately, at this point, the meeting room is overtaxed, in terms of not only the sheer number of meetings that occur during the year, but also, it becomes a little overloaded in terms of facility space, especially in the children's library, needing to use that space as well to have their various activities accommodated. And so, we looked at the existing floor plan, this is basically the lower level, and the staff wisely, I think, decided that what needed to be done was take the critical large collection areas, whether it was a children's library, whether it was fiction or nonfiction, and try to group those a lot more legibly, and not have them chopped up in terms of putting various parts of the building. And so, what we looked at from the beginning with staff was their recommendation to take the lower level, existing lower level of the library, and devote that to the children's library, and that included an expansion of all those reading spaces and staff space, as well as a children's reading and meeting area, which is what you see sort of at the south end of the existing floor plan there, with a semicircular reading group, and that can accommodate all the needs of the children's library, where they were using that meeting room space before to try to accommodate that. We did a... Oh, thank you. That was the wrong button.
I tried to help, and I would have been better if I had.
It was on the side, wasn't it?
No, I think it's up here.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. And so, we looked at a small addition on both levels to the east side of the library, on either side of what is the current bookmobile garage, and we added on each side badly-needed staff space, a staff lounge, and also more bathrooms in this area, which were the increased occupant load of this large assembly space necessitated. I'm going to keep going with the explanation of what we did on the existing building first, and then we'll move on to the addition. Within this existing portion of the library here, this then began, became reorganized, such that we were able to re-center the staff circulation areas and help areas, right off of the main entry access here, you can see the existing elevator right here. We added another stairway down to the children's area, so that became very readable in terms of where to go, up and down to the various levels, and provide more direct space down to that children's floor. Then, another stair going up on either side of the elevator to the circulation space, which also was expanded to include more badly-needed additional space for staff offices, and circulation, and book classification and repair. Essentially, what happens on the existing lower level, then, as you come in the old entry to the Carnegie portion, that space more or less retains its feel as a reading area, as a seating area, sort of a living room, if you will, as you come into the library on this side. What we did do is take and reserve this portion of that floor for new bookstore and gift shop area. It occupies a very beautiful part of the original Carnegie library. We felt that would honor that space, as well as make the bookshop and the gift store much more accessible to the library patrons. And then, the audiovisual area was expanded on this side of the circulation space, as well as the fiction space, and then, as you see in this portion back here, that adds more meeting room space for staff, more offices, receiving area and receiving dock, as well as the book area and circulation backroom area for the staff. The meeting room retains its, basically, all of its character and function, except we extend through what is meeting room space, we extend a corridor which would connect with all of the new public space that is added. From this point, we are in a new ground level, same level as the existing entry and meeting room space, that provides another entrance to the public portion of the building, more public portion of the building. The library can be zoned off and secured, and then, after hours, this public space can be accommodated by whatever function or group needs to use that space. The auditorium is stepped, this auditorium here provides slope seating. There is a upper level above all of this space, and that access is the upper portion of the auditorium. You'll see that a little more clearer in the images coming up. And then, last but not least, we relocated the bookmobile, which occupied kind of a more critical area of space within the existing library for program. It's nicely accessible off of the street here and alley, and, you know, provides, via new elevator here, provides access to all the floors in the building. We expanded, the old entry kind of stops here, we expanded it out further towards the courtyard, and we expanded the public courtyard all the way across to, from street corner to the existing entry here, and we'll show you slides of the character of that here So, and as that's what happens, is with sort of adding on the new addition space off of the ground level, the current ground level, entering the current meeting level, that gives more support and credence to having this portion of the building, the public portion, accessible directly from grade, making it a lot more easy to go in and out of the space for folks of all ages, but we think about that in these winters that we have. It just makes it safer and easier to find the entries, as well as essentially making a scissor effect between the lower and upper floor of this existing building. Then, we're at a half level to those two levels, and then we added a level correspondingly above, which is at a half level to this space. In order to accommodate that half level, we will add another stop to the existing elevator, as well as stairs up to this level, as we pointed out earlier. This upper level in front of the entrance occupies a two-story space that's open down to the main floor, off the sides, allows for large, sort of, nonfiction and folio books in this area, as well as beautiful seating areas that can look out onto the street, as well as through all portions of the library. We added some individual study rooms across, and those essentially get built right at the back of the existing meeting room up above, so that we can utilize some of the volume of that room a little more efficiently. And then, this level here, being part of that, what we'd call the new upper level, is accessible by elevator, as well as stair, and we're looking at doing a ramp here between the two reading areas, between the existing, instead of this stair, we'll probably swap that out for a ramp along the back of the space here. And then, as I mentioned before, this upper level auditorium accessible from above, and you can walk down into the tiers all the way down, and then, this upper level portion of the space above is for more staff offices and exhibit and gallery space. I did forget to mention that underneath that new addition space are two large, what the library staff like to call maker rooms. These are flexible, multi-use rooms that can be used for everything from workshops and teaching spaces to other meeting spaces for the public. And I neglected to mention as well is that there is a stage area at the lower portion of the auditorium, and it is handicap accessible. And so, these images start to define how hard we worked to sort of celebrate the existing character of the space, as well as maintain a lot of the same volumes and roof shapes in order to make the addition look as seamless as possible, and basically look like one building. This is the new entry at where the old one used to be. That roof of that existing entry is completely repurposed into some of that seating space above that I showed you for the large nonfiction book area, and then, the computer room is also accommodated here above, next to the existing meeting room. All of these spaces being tied together by that large public space, which can accommodate both program functions for the library, outdoor education areas, as well as city get-togethers, concerts, what have you. It becomes a space, I think, that will be heavily used by the downtown public. Some of the views here is up above that, this is in the entry space, looking down below into the new entry areas, and showing a lot of light-filled areas up above. This is that space that we're looking out towards the new entry, repurposed entry here, and then, seating areas up above. This is at the auditorium, we're looking down from the upper level, and looking at the platform, the stage, and accessible ramp, as well as the tiered seating. And then, this is looking into some of the maker spaces from the other secondary or additional west entry that we showed you earlier. And so, remodeled, expanded, existing entry, new west entry for the public portion of the library, and then, the public space, outdoor public space tying all of that together. Some of the thoughts that we had about that outdoor space included basically zoning portions of that space for anything from outdoor seating to sort of exploration areas for children, in terms of playmounds, seating areas, the Prairie Plaza, just trying to accommodate multiple functions in areas where the staff can use those to teach outdoor, teach things to the children in an outdoor setting. And then, some more views of that at night, the lighting of those features, and street lighting that matches the existing street lighting downtown. Some of the play structures, interpretive structures that can be accommodated in that large public space. And then, some of those seating mounds that can be used for everything from teaching to just sitting and gathering. Another shot of that at night. And then, sort of a panoramic look back at going to, looking towards the north from the southwest corner of the property. This becomes an opportunity for signage and identification here. Another view, sort of looking back at the maker spaces from that Prairie Plaza area. And so, to wrap up, as I mentioned, this provides, I think, kind of a full optimization of the library property with the expansion that we are able to undertake by demolishing that south end of the block there, provides the opportunity to bring the entire focus of the library into one single hole of a building, rather than different buildings and different pieces. Our budget at this time, obviously, we have only completed the preliminary design, and when we go through the next phases of design, we need to look and evaluate all the decisions that we've made, and that may have impact on the budget either up or down. And so, we have been working with a range. We feel it's premature at this time to abandon the concept of a range of cost. However, we do think that the construction cost can be contained to fulfill that scope of a project in the $10.5 to $12 million range. We can sharpen the pencil, dial in the numbers, as we go through the successive phases of design. We anticipate the construction to last about a year. We anticipate the construction to last about a year. We can accommodate phasing and allow occupation of the library space, but we will have to study that in terms of how all the pieces of construction go together in the further stages. Is there anything I can, any questions I can answer, or any other thoughts that you have?
Do you have any preliminary dates that you would like to start?
Yeah.
Next month.
In order to accommodate, you know, our winters, and, you know, we do try to build year-round, it's kind of a given, but in order to accommodate the best environment for both bidding and construction, we, I think, you know, both Rita and I feel that if we can be in a position to bid and start construction in spring of '20, that allows us the proper amount of design time that need to be done for this fairly intensive structure, which means we would like to start really no later, you know, than fall/winter of '19, you know, or earlier. That allows us plenty of time to get in and investigate any other issues that are remaining. We know that there are some things we need to revisit. On the whole, the feedback we got from the public meetings was terrific. I'd like to just say that, you know, some of them quote, you know, "Wonderful site and plans, like it all." And, you know, they also suggest, you know, looking at, the ramp idea came up, which I thought was an excellent idea. But there are things we need to study, and then we need adequate time to do a very accurate set of drawings and specifications, so that you get the best value and we get, you know, as close to a perfect set of drawings, which don't exist, but we always try to get those, so that minimizes need for change order and delay.
The reason I asked that question was there are multiple projects planned in the downtown area. Not directly adjacent to you, but close will be the construction of the new American Bank Center to the east, and then the possibility also of a theater being constructed, similar timeframe. We got a lot of moving parts. I would just ask that, you know, continue to coordinate with our staff, so you know the project dates and our staff knows, you know, some of your timeline, so we can coordinate some of that. We don't need to have a whole lot of streets shut down in the downtown all at once, so.
We are also, I just want to say, certainly very open to any thoughts you, as commissioners, have regarding the facility design, as well as, we will work with city staff, obviously, going forward with our planning.
Yeah, I think it looks great. And the only thing that, you know, when I look at some of the outside stuff, I always wonder about the guy that has to maintain the grass on the slope, little seating pad, if that's going to be turf or real grass.
Those are exactly the kind of issues we need to, you know, we're kind of in the "look pretty" stage of a lot of the drawings. I think it has a very strong foundation, but all those details, you know, both in terms of maintenance and long-term implications, need to be looked at, I agree.
Snow removal in that area, anything that can impede that, so, all that needs to be looked at, so.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners?
Mr. President.
Just trust him.
Mrs. Ennin, is there opportunities for private funding or federal funding for a project like this?
I believe that there are. That is something where, we were wanting approval of a project before we went too far down that road, but we will be looking at grants, and I'm going to be attending some grant training this summer. We will, obviously, the foundation will be working on doing some local fundraising as well. So, we don't expect you to come up with $12 million, put it that way, but we will work hard through our share.
Do you, I mean, is there a rough idea for federal grant dollars of scale? Are we talking a couple hundred thousand, a million? I'm just curious what those levels are.
That will depend. I don't know a number that I feel confident to give you at this time.
Okay. You know, and I would echo what President Decker said. I mean, I love the outside personally, and I would hate to see, you know, the uniqueness and the courtyard sacrifice some of that individuality that I think it has right now, but logistically, I can see where some of those things could be a problem for maintenance. But I hope that that doesn't discourage you from still looking at some of those unique opportunities to bring those things to your building site. I think it's very, very cool.
Anything else, commissioners? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go to planning. Mr. Hadley, we have Country Oaks rezoning.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance 1675. You heard it at the last meeting. There haven't been any changes to it. Obviously, this is somewhat of a correction from the 2012 application that came through and didn't ever make it to the city commissioner's desk to be considered. There hasn't been any comments from the public since the last meeting, and staff would continue to recommend approval.
If I remember correctly, we did have the public hearing at the last.
We did, yes, we did.
So, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Hadley on ordinance 1675, which is rezoning of Country Oaks?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance number 1675.
We have a motion to approve the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1675.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? If there are none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair with aye. Motion carries on 1675. We have no reports from building and code enforcement. Public issues of city concern not on the agenda. If anyone has any issues concerning the city that have not been placed on our agenda, please come forward and state your name.
Hi.
Hi there.
I'm Bernadette Boucher. I'm the manager of the Sunset Senior Center. And we received our check in the mail from, for the city grant, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There was, there was a stipulation on there that money had to be used for LED lights. These are very nice. I'm sure they're LED lights. We could use the money for, help pay our bills and maintenance, so are we, do we have to spend the money for LED lights, is what I want to say. We got quite a bit less than what we've been used to other years, but I can understand that, we can live with that.
I guess I'm not aware of the stipulations that were placed on that.
Joe, you want to?
There is a committee that reviews that, and they look at different things. Some are operational costs, some are the LED lights. The committee went more for projects this year and the lighting to see some savings and some other things. But it was one of the, it was one of the requested items, you'd have.
It was one of the requests. We've, but.
So, it was on the application.
But it has, we have to use it for LED lights or return them to the check. We have it in our hot little hand.
Yes, we generally do, when we give money to organizations for this, we like them to spend it on items that improve their facilities. So, I think we'd like you to spend it.
So, we get LED lights.
Yeah, if that's what the money was requested for, yes.
Okay. Well, I have some board members here, if they want to say something.
Are you having some issues with some other funding, or you said you'd like to pay your bills?
Well, every month, it's kind of, we run about $200, $200 to $300 behind. We've had a few extra bills, we had to increase our insurance. The place hadn't been, insurance hadn't been reviewed for 25 years, and we had to increase the insurance, which added some more cost to our premium and stuff.
Mrs. Trustum, you had a question?
You know, you're talking about operational expenses. Where do you receive your income? Is it mostly?
Pinochle, whis, bingo.
I gotta get in some of those pinochle.
I mean, it, and we have soup and farmer's hats, we have things like that. We raise about $10,000 a year on our own.
That's great. Who's on, who's on the committee that reviews the?
Myself, Deputy Administrator Carlson, help me.
I'm.
Irv was on that, Irv from the Community Action Partnership.
Or Bren.
Yes.
Are there any commissioners on that?
Not on that one, no.
The senior one?
No.
I understand, you know, that we want to encourage those grants we use for projects, but I don't want to hold their hands tied to it either. I think, you know, from what we give out is minimal. I don't know exactly what we awarded you, I don't remember, but I don't, I think as long as it's going to improvements, I don't know if their hands should be tied to which ones it is. That would be my personal opinion.
Do you recall, do you recall what you requested and what we?
We requested $15,000, but we had, that was including insurance and everything else. The insurance premium, the, just, even our snow removal this year was a lot more than what we've ever done. We've gotten someone who does it very reasonably, but it was an everyday thing.
And what did we, what did we grant you?
You granted us $5100.
Of the $15,000?
Of the $15,000.
I might state that something that during this, I've been in this subsidy program for the last two years now, and this year, we did get a lot more applications, some that we haven't gotten before. And I will state that we have always gone through mostly projects first, to make sure that they have that, and we try to keep within, we did spend a total of $125,000 of tax money for subsidies for this program. So, we try to give everybody something and stuff. So, we look at all the years across and what we've given before and stuff. So, I know some got less, some got a little bit more that hadn't asked from before, but it depended on their projects. And we usually take a good, almost two hours to go through this thing.
This, this was for the senior grants, right? So, that's $50,000, right?
There actually is a subsidy.
No.
There's a senior, so, I'm sorry, there is only a $50,000 minimum. I was thinking of the subsidy one.
Yeah, so it does.
So, it's a $50,000 minimum, that's what we, as U.S. commissioners, have asked us to keep that as that limit, and then that's what we give you out.
I think it might be appropriate if they wanted to send us a letter to say we've changed our minds, something else, because it was in their request, we didn't make it up.
Yes, yeah.
So, if they wanted to write us a letter and say we'd rather use it for this, then we could take it back to that committee and ask them. I think that'd be appropriate.
I think they need to stay open.
So, if you need to spend the money, submit a letter to us.
Okay.
Requesting a change in the usage of the funds.
But we can keep the check, or should I return it?
You can keep the check.
Keep the check, yeah, send us a letter.
And just send you a letter.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to request that there be a commissioner on there as well. It's helpful when we're up here and we can have someone that can speak on behalf of that committee.
We can do that, yeah.
Because I know we have two on the subsidy grant, so.
Since this is somewhat of an appeal, you're right, that's a, that's a good idea.
I think it is a good idea to have a, I thought we had a commissioner on that, but one, we don't have somebody sitting on, so.
Never have.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? If there's any items of city concern not on our agenda, please come forward, state your name with your concern. All right, seeing no one else from the public has any concerns not on the agenda. Item 11, commissioners, do you have anything that you wish to speak to?
I have one item. I attended an open house last night with the DOT about the lighting project on Millard, and there was some discussion that happened. Mr. Gao and I were privy to it, some discussion about some challenges that they're having with our downtown. And there is a plan to remove the light at Sims and Millard. One of those challenges then is putting in a crossing for the public. And we know in that area, between Sims and First, we have quite a bit of people scooting across the street. One of the suggestions that were, was presented to Mr. Gao and I were a possibility of taking about six blocks of the downtown, basically from 22, if I'm correct.
Correct.
22 going east to up to around Dairy Barn, the fourth, I think it's fourth, and converting that to only, basically what would be three lanes of traffic. A single lane going west, single lane going east, and then a turnout lane in the middle for that six blocks. It'll allow for a couple of opportunities, it would allow for some, some different lighting in that area, because there are some concerns on how they're going to stack the lighting, the lighting poles, and it also offers the opportunity during a snow emergency to stack some of that snow in that turnout lane in the middle. You still have the one lane, you know, east and west, and it would allow some build-out on the sidewalks to accommodate some better parking in that six-block region. So, it's just something, you know, to consider. Talk to Mr. Gao, your thoughts on that. I like the idea personally. I think it'll slow, you know, traffic down. I know there's some, probably some, you know, challenges that we need to talk with the street department and some of the things they wanted to do, but I do think it would give a unique look to those six blocks in the downtown area and overcome that challenge of a pedestrian crossing between Sims and First. Because right now, that light's going to come out, because it does not warrant being there, and if we decide to leave that light there, it falls upon us, all maintenance of that light, and we cannot, cannot replace it, according to federal rules. If any federal dollars are used on this, we cannot replace that light. So, once it goes into disrepair, we would basically have an old light structure hanging there, because you can't touch it. So, there are a few things to think about. Mr. Gao, you have anything else?
No, I think that's good. It will improve, we think, some safety in that. There was a lot of concern about taking the light out and increased speeds through there without a way to slow them down, so this could take care of that.
So, that's it. Anything else, commissioners? Do you have anything? If there are nothing, I look for a motion adjourned.
So, move.
Second.
We are adjourned.